It is 2:05. This meeting is called to order. I believe we have all of our school board members in attendance.
No, Vicky.
She's coming.
She's on the way.
And she's coming. Okay. So who's taking notes, by the way? Thank you. Make a note of who is not here and add them to the minutes when they arrive. Okay? Thank you. So I just wanted to take a minute and then I'm going to call on the Chair of the Audit Advisory Committee to make a few comments. But I really appreciate this opportunity. It's the first time that, since I've been here, maybe the first time ever, that we've had this opportunity to convene together. And I'm not sure why we haven't done it sooner, but I would think it would be a good idea for us to do this, if not once a year, at least every other year. So I took a minute to thank the members that are here, and I know the board feels the same way. The value that they bring to Orange County Public Schools is beyond words. And so, but also after we hear from Ms. Campbell, I was going to talk about how I see us operating through this meeting. Ms. Campbell?
Thank you for having the Audit Committee here and involving us in this position and this process. We look forward to providing whatever feedback we can from our various financial backgrounds and our work with the current school board. We can internal auditor and provide insight and help you through the process as well.
Okay. We're going to rely on Ms. Lindsay to run the meeting. She's going to go through the presentation. She did share with me. Each of us has seen the presentation individually. If you have a question and you know it's going to be answered in upcoming slides, obviously hold it. But if you do have something that comes to mind on a particular slide, by all means, we'll stop there, pause there, and address that. She is going to call on each of us when we get to the point where we're having discussion. And so what I suggested was we, I'm sure you all have been to meetings where you use this rather than keeping your hand up forever and feeling like you're back in grade school. Some fond memories somehow, some fond memories from being on that account. So everybody good with this? When you want to be recognized? Okay. And if you have it up for a long time and you're getting passed over, you can always resort to rock wadding up a piece of paper and throwing it. Back to grade school. Sorry. Okay. With that, Ms. Lindsay, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair of the Board and Madam Chair of the Audit Committee and various board members and committee members and staff. Thank you very much for having us here today. The purpose of this afternoon's meeting is to talk about the process by which we want to accomplish the search and hiring of a new school board internal auditor. But before we move forward with that discussion, I'd like to introduce the members of the Audit Committee just a little bit more than we have at this point. As Chair Jacobs pointed out, Tammy Campbell, to her left, is our Chair of the Audit Advisory Committee. Tammy is a CPA and a partner at McDermott Davis &amp; Company CPAs. She is the practice leader of that office. And she specializes in state and local government auditing, so that is definitely an asset to our work. Steven Bowman, yeah, thank you, is a Certified Information Systems Auditor, and he serves as the IT Audit Manager with Darden Restaurants and is a new member of our committee. But I will say that Darden, being an excellent partner with the district, has provided a member to our Audit Committee almost since its very inception. The very first chair of the Audit Committee was the Senior VP for Audit with Darden Restaurants. His name was Jim Ingersoll. So Darden's been great in providing talent and expertise to this work. Missing from us today sadly, she woke up this morning feeling unwell, is Lynn Mole. Lynn is a CPA, and she is the Chief Audit Executive and Director of Internal Audit with the Institute of Internal Auditors. Also with us today is Brian Paulson. Brian is Director, Disney Cruise Line Finance and Planning with Walt Disney World Resorts. And lastly, but not least, Sancta Patel is a Certified Information Systems Auditor, and he is the Director for IT, Internal Audit, and Financial Advisory Services with Protiviti here in town. Additionally, serving in a non-moting ex officio capacity, our own School Board Chair and our General Counsel are part of the Audit Advisory Committee. So with those introductions, we'll jump into our meeting objectives.
Ms. Lindsay, I apologize, but I should have oversight. I should have recognized the superintendent, but I wanted to offer a few words, put you on the spot there, didn't I? It's okay. I'm used to it. I've had great practice.
I know, that's what I mean.
So, yeah, thank you. Linda, first and foremost, I want to say thank you for your service to our district.
Thanks.
No, you're not, but I think yesterday you said that your husband keeps asking when. But really, you've provided such a valuable service to our district in this area, and we are so appreciative of it. You are very skilled and have a great attention to detail and have always had the district's best interest at heart. So we're so thankful, but we know that you deserve this next phase of your life. And so I'm excited that we are able to participate in this process, getting a better understanding of, you know, the functions and looking at the job description and the timeline so that we can have the very best candidates in the pool and do it in a manner that doesn't have your husband needing to ask when.
So I didn't realize that had been an issue. Tell him November 2026. It's going to be a very thoughtful deliberative process.
All right then. Thank you for being here. Yeah, yes. All right. Well, I thought that it would be a good idea to set out in a bit more detail the objectives of today's meeting, just to help keep us on focus. Because as I've said to many of you in our briefings, today's meeting, I hope, is going to build the track and establish the stopping points and who's going to get on and off of this train so that once the meeting concludes, we can drive the train down the track that you've built and execute the procedures that need to be done. So firstly, we're going to just briefly review the Audit and Internal Control charters. The Audit Committee has done an annual review of that, of those documents. They did that in November and recommended some changes to you, but we've held those until after today's meeting, just in case something else came along. This isn't really a meeting about revising charters, but I felt inappropriate just to wait until we had this discussion before they were brought to the Board for its approval. We're going to talk about the job description for this position, and that will take a little bit more time. And we're going to talk about the search and hiring process for a new school board internal auditor. And so without much ado, let's jump ahead. Our outline is going to consist of talking about things in four parts. The first part is just for review for some of you that have been around, but for the newer board members, it might be somewhat newer. But it's good, I think, to set the context and the table for the discussion so everybody starts from the same place. So we're going to briefly review best practices of an effective internal audit, governance and reporting relationships that support it. We're going to talk about the key parts of the charters I mentioned earlier that are pertinent to today's discussion. We're going to talk about the internal auditor's position, the job description, the reporting lines, and so forth. And then we're going to hopefully decide upon a process by which we can go forth and start this effort. So firstly, let's talk about the internal audit governance and reporting relationship. This slide may be familiar to those of you who were on the Board when we had a work session last August, but for refresher, professional internal auditing at OCPS has been in place at least since before 25 years ago. And when I say professional internal auditing relationship, I'm mostly referring to the reporting relationship. Certainly, the Internal Audit Department at OCPS has been around probably for 75 or 100 years. I don't know. But sometime further back than 25 years ago, the Audit Department was taken out from under management and reported, began reporting independently so that there was no question of its objectivity and oversight. So you will notice that the Audit Advisory Committee was established by the School Board in 2003, and that was deliberate in order to help with overseeing the internal audit function since it was no longer under management. And then we also had, I want to point out to you, that our department follows the professional standards that are promulgated by the Institute of Internal Auditors. The Institute of Internal Auditors is a global organization that provides professional standards and support and guidance to internal auditors throughout the world, and we follow those professional standards, as do many, many, many internal audit shops. And lastly, as I tell most of you, even the auditors get audited. We do have external peer reviews of our department every five years in order to be able to cite that we follow the professional standards. And the last one of those is in 2021, so my successors will have to make sure that we keep that going with an external peer review in the fall of next year. Now, just as a quick review, the purpose of internal audit is, of course, to provide all of you folks, as well as district stakeholders and taxpayers in the community, with assurance about the risk management and internal controls and other operations of the district. This is part of being transparent and accountable to our constituents. And although we are independent of management, I want to assure you, as I think you all know, we are all in on supporting the district's strategic plan and objectives. That's the beauty of being an internal auditor. We do work for OCPS, for the Board, but we want to make sure the work we do is absolutely in support of the district's mission statement, goals, and objectives, and is signed to help management manage risks that would interfere with the achievement of those objectives. Our work in auditing, governance, risk management, and control processes is focused on the risks that might jeopardize achievement of those objectives. And the work of our, excuse me, the results of our work do support the Board and management in decision-making and in protecting the district's reputation and the assurance that its many stakeholders expect. Now, we operate pursuant to a mandate that, in our case, is put forth in two documents, one being the School Board Approved Audit Charter, which we'll talk in depth about later, and the other being Florida statutes. I would also believe that best practices are a mandate for us. Any organization worth its salt is going to have a robust internal audit function to help provide that assurance that's necessary for stakeholders and constituents. According to the statutes, we have the same authority and access to records, documents, personnel, and so forth as the State Auditor General does. Now, the Institute of Internal Auditors has put forth these essential conditions on this slide that they have stated are essential for an effective internal control function. Certainly, I think it's pretty obvious that it would be necessary for effectiveness, but I wanted to put this slide in for two reasons. One is to stand in front of you and say that, in my opinion, all of these essential conditions are present here at OCPS, which is a very positive thing. But secondly, I want us to be able to emphasize and promote this when we post the position because candidates of quality will also want to know that indeed all of these essential conditions are present. They're going to want to know that there is senior management and school board support of the audit function. They're going to want to know that there is an independent reporting relationship and so forth and so on. So this is an important factor that we want to make note of. Now, briefly, how is independence achieved? Also, from the Institute, accountability to either the Board and/or an independent Audit Committee is the key to independence. Having access to all areas is critical. Having the necessary and appropriate resources, having effective audit and board oversight, and having administrative reporting to a senior executive level is okay. In other words, independence is not impaired if, for administrative matters, the audit function has some type of management oversight, as long as the function, the function of internal auditing is answerable to the Board and/or the Audit Committee. So at Orange County Public Schools, the School Board did establish the Audit Committee, as I mentioned earlier, in 2003, as a committee of independent qualified individuals who will oversee the internal audit function on its behalf, knowing they possess the knowledge and expertise that's necessary for this. This is a working group of experts who actively perform their responsibilities. And on the next two slides, we're going to review some of the actual work that they do for and be on behalf of the School Board. Up to this point in time, the administrative types of things, such as if I want to go to a conference, for example, have been handled through the Chief, excuse me, through the General Counsel. So this is the first of the two slides, I said, that describe the Audit Committee's responsibilities. You can see there's some real roll-up your shirt sleeves and get the work type done here. They do review the plans, activities, staffing, and structure of our department. They review and approve our risk assessment and our audit plans. They monitor our performance against the plan throughout the year. They do monitor management's responses to open audit findings. They help to ensure there are no restrictions on internal audit, and they do review the effectiveness of both internal and external audit functions, meeting with external auditors twice a year, once before the audit work is significantly entered into and once at the end of the audit process. Additionally, they assess and evaluate their own performance once a year. Every November, they use an evaluation instrument and talk about how effective are they as an Audit Committee in performing their duties and responsibilities to the School Board and whether there are opportunities for improvement. They do review the charters I mentioned earlier, and we'll talk a bit about those in the next section of our presentation. They meet annually with the Chief Information Officer to talk about IT issues, and they, of course, conduct annual performance appraisal of the auditor. And annually, they come before you, usually it has been in January, to formally, in a structured environment, report to you on their work and some of the other necessary things that are going along with following professional standards. Now, previously, that report was in January. At their November meeting, the committee discussed the timing of this, knowing we had just had a work session in August, and we had this one, which is not really technically about the business of the Audit Committee, but it's a focus. And because our audit plan runs on a fiscal year basis from July 1 to June 30, so in their November meeting, the committee recommended that they change that annual report to the Board from a January date to a July date, and that is our plan. We will request time with you in July to make the annual report from the Audit Committee to the Board. And just for those of you who would like to see it in a graphic way, this is how the reporting relationship works. This is how it's been working ever since the Audit Committee came into existence. The auditor reports to the School Board through the Audit Advisory Committee. So it's, this is exactly what's going on now. So moving along to the charters. Now, as I noted earlier, as part of its responsibilities... Did I do something? Oh, I'm sorry. No, you didn't do anything.
I know, they get to change something.
Is it okay? I apologize. As part of its responsibilities and in accordance with the professional standards, the Audit Committee reviews the charters of its committee and of our internal audit department annually to determine whether revisions are needed. Often, there aren't revisions needed, but the desire is to build in a discipline so that in their annual program of work, they do look at those charters instead of just putting them on a shelf to get dusty. And when revisions are necessary, they evaluate those and recommend them to the Board for approval. This year, well, last year now, there were new standards put out by the Institute of Internal Auditors. That was the sum and substance of what we talked about in that August work session. And the new standards called for, they didn't call for it, but because the new standards were here, we needed to make some changes in the charters to conform some language and some clarity around the charter provisions so that we were clearly in conformity with the new standards. So that process concluded in November, and you've been provided with red lines of the two charters that reflect those revisions. So today, we're not going to go through the recommended revisions of the charters per se, but we're going to briefly review what is in each charter and then focus on the part of each charter that specifically deals with today's key business. So first, starting with the Audit Committee, the Audit Charter for the Committee has this content in it. It talks about what the establishment was, what the term limits or the terms of the members are. It does prohibit conflicts of interest by the Audit Committee members. They cannot, they and their companies can't be doing anything with the district in the terms of business that would be a conflict. It describes their roles and responsibilities and talks about their reporting relationship. But what I want to emphasize to you today is this paragraph from the Charter of the Audit Committee, which deals specifically with wide ear gathering. And it talks about that they are charged by the Board through the Charter to provide input and recommendations to the School Board in the performance, appointment, replacement, or dismissal of the School Board Internal Auditor, including participation by designated Audit Advisory Committee members in any interview or selection process. So what we're getting ready to do is consistent with the Charter that you folks have adopted. The Internal Audit Department Charter, like previously, contains basic things you would expect to be in a charter, the purpose of the department, the scope of work that they are charged with performing, the professional standards and practices that they must meet, the mandate and responsibility, and so forth. For purposes of today's discussion, we want to focus on this last bullet, independence, organizational structure, and reporting relationships, because that is something we want to make very clear before we post the position. This is the language from the current and proposed, there's no changes in this provision, that is in the Charter for the department. And again, this is the way it operates now and the way it's been operating since the existence of the Audit Committee began. So the School Board Internal Auditor reports to the School Board of Orange County through its Audit Advisory Committee. The School Board Internal Auditor reports administratively to the District General Counsel for routine administrative matters. I mentioned that earlier. The School Board Internal Auditor's annual performance evaluation is prepared by the Audit Advisory Committee and signed by both the Chair of the Committee and the District General Counsel. So again, this is what the Charter reflects at the present time. Now, when we get into the next section, which is the job description, we're going to find some inconsistency currently. And before we leave the meeting, we want to have the charters and the practice and the job description all aligned so that they clearly and consistently describe how this works. The Audit Committee also, I have to give credit, in this next section, has been terrific in providing really good insights into how this works in the private sector and suggestions from their experience and knowledge of audit positions and audit executives at other organizations. And it's been very valuable to me in preparing this presentation for you folks. Now firstly, the key features of the current job description, and they're on this slide and the next one. The title is, as you see it, "The Educational Requirement and the Professional Certifications." Nothing really proposed to be changed there, except possibly there's been some discussion about the title, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. We do believe the Board might consider a different title when posting the position because the phrase "School Board Internal Auditor" doesn't really sound like the chief executive, chief audit executive of one of the largest school districts in the nation. And when I show you some comparable data from other school districts, you'll see what I'm talking about. Continuing with the current job description, oops, it didn't dance. The years and type of experience is listed here. Right now, the job description says this position reports to the General Counsel in the sentence. This part right here, oops, I'm so sorry. I can't highlight on the screen. The second part there is a recommendation, and that is that we do recommend that job description be changed to reflect the reporting relationship as it's working and as is stated in the charters before this is posted, because a quality applicant is going to look at the job description probably first, and if they see that it doesn't report to the Board or the Audit Committee, as is expected in, consistent with professional standards, they might be hesitant to apply. And here's the salary range, and I will note that it is in Group 2 on the district's salary schedule, and we would recommend that it be moved either to Group 1 or the executive management salary schedule. All right. Because I have worked with you people for so long, I know that you always, or at least often, ask me, "Well, what do other districts do?" So I surveyed some of my colleagues at other school districts in the Council of Great City Schools Internal Auditors Group. I know on the screen, this is probably too small, but I think you all have a version that you can look at more closely. And these are a couple of Florida districts, as well as several from around the country, large urban districts, and you can see how their titles, their bachelor, or their degrees, and years of experience, and professional certifications line up. And this is also highlighting, I think, some of the differences in the way they title the chief auditor or the lead audit position in their various districts. I'm just presenting this to you as information at this point with the idea that you will digest it and decide what, if any, you want to do about job titles and/or other matters. But I think we line up very nicely in terms of the degree, the years of experience, and the certifications required. It looks like everybody's pretty consistent. And also, as we advance into the process, I'll add, I know all of these auditors professionally through the Council, and they also sent me their job descriptions. So if that becomes useful as we move forward, I have those available to work with HR or whatever. All right. Now we've come to the heart of today's discussion. We intend to post the position to the district's website, of course, and to the Association of Local Governments Auditor's Job Board, and we'll post it with the Council of Great City Schools Internal Auditors Network. It's not really an official job board, but we have a group chat and some group emails, and we can share it that way, as well as through the Institute of Internal Auditors. Possibly one or two other locations as well will evaluate what audiences those places reach and what the cost of those additional postings might be. In the posting, we want to emphasize, in addition to how wonderful it is to work at Orange County Public Schools and how great our department is, we'll want to emphasize that we do have the correct reporting relationship in place. We do have the essential conditions that the Institute of Internal Auditors has identified for an effective audit function in place, and we do follow the IIA standards. People will want to know this when they're applying. Now, this is a draft of a process that we might follow moving forward. In putting this together, we contemplated two rounds of interviews. In putting this together, we contemplated two rounds of interviews, an initial screening that would be conducted by staff just to weed out anyone who mistakenly applied that clearly didn't fit the requirements, but a short list of applicants to be developed for interview from that by perhaps the audit advisory committee or some subset of that group with possible input from senior management. If you remember, when we met in August, management can provide input. That's not going to infringe on independence, but it's not required. And then interview questions and a round of interviews with possible recommendations of candidates for a second round. And then conducting second round interviews and so forth. What we need to decide today is, this is just my preliminary thoughts, but we need to really talk through who's going to be involved in each of these steps so that we can proceed from this point forward to just implement that plan. Keep in mind that both the audit advisory committee and the school board are sunshine committees, sunshine boards. Any meetings will have to be posted, and the more people we get involved, the greater input, but also the more difficult scheduling will be, because the audit committee members are very, very busy and they have day jobs, and the school board members are very, very busy and have many things going on. So as you deliberate and, and consider what the different choices are today, let's try to find the right balance between getting everyone's involvement and input, but not encumbering the process unnecessarily. I'm going to go to the next slide, and then I'm going to come back to this one and ask for, if I may, Madam Chairs, ask for some discussion. But the next slide is a proposed, very, very tentative timeline that is built off of the process that was described in the previous slide. So, and it's aggressive, okay? It's an aggressive timeline. But we've got to get something out there to start figuring out. And as you're also deliberating who might be involved in what phases of this effort, you will have some idea of the timeframe when we might do the work, so that if your, your other commitments and your calendars are such that you have greater availability or lesser availability, that can be factored in as we're evaluating who does what when. Additionally, we have a little bit of a constraint, because in March, there's only one school board meeting due to spring break. So whatever we can't, to the extent it needs full board approval, whatever we can't get completed by March 11th, we'll need to defer at least to April 1st. So that's, that's another consideration as well. But this is, this is really the meat and potatoes of today's meeting. We are respectfully requesting discussion, guidance, direction from the 13 of you here, I guess Lynn could make it, 12 of you here, as to how you see this moving forward and how, excuse me, how we are going to proceed. So following your suggestion, Chair Jacobs, I see Melissa Byrd's tag is upright, correct?
Thank you. Um, I, when looking at your suggestions for the first round of, to get the shortlist, the second section there, I agree that I think the initial screening, I'm fine with HR or in the internal auditor now doing that, no, go back, there you go. On the next one, though, I feel like, I think the audit committee, definitely, I want to have their input, or at least a subcommittee of the audit committee, if there's just maybe a, you know, a small group of them that can need to do that, to look at the, look at those and create a shortlist. I don't really know that senior management at that point needs to be involved, because I feel like we might want their input once you get narrowed down to like two or three candidates. But at this point, I want to really know from the professionals, I want to know from the auditors. I would also really like to have the internal auditor's opinion, I'd like your opinion, about the applicants that we get. I want to, I want to see like the first shortlist group of applicants to know that they are approved, have the seal of approval, from the people that know what they're looking for, as far as auditing goes. That would be my opinion. At least that way, from there, then I feel like you can get, you know, senior management involved, you know, who, if it's a matter of who they feel most comfortable working with, you know, those kinds of things. But at that point, I really want to know that these applicants are qualified, have the skills that we're looking for, and the background and all of that. And I think the audit committee and the internal auditor are the best people to be able to do that. That's mine.
And Member Perron?
So I definitely agree. I think that's a great, great input from Number Word, and I think maybe even having that senior management be down more where we, when it's the fourth one down, where it's conducting the first interviews, that's where they would sit in on those, or they may even have some interview questions, things that they were wanting to know. So maybe even Number Three where they've got some questions. But I agree, I think, you know, really getting it narrowed down to these are, any of these three, four people that we have before us, any of those would be amazing. They've got the qualifications, they've got everything that you need, and now we get a little more nitty gritty on some of the questions that we had to ask in as far as like working with them and feeling connected in that sense. So I agree, I think moving that down and really kind of keeping it as, like a smaller group, because I think the auditors, you all know more of what you're looking for and what it takes than, you know, some of us who are not in the auditing world.
Chair Jacobs?
Thank you. I just have a follow-up to Vice Chair. I may have misheard you, but I thought on Number Two, you had said the audit advisory committee and the school board or a school board member, but not senior management. Were you thinking school board at that level or school board representative?
I, I did not include a school board representative. I, I said the school board auditor. I meant the internal auditor.
Okay. I just, I wanted to make sure if that's what you meant, that we considered that.
I, I heard what you said, that it was the audit committee and the auditor.
Okay, good. Wish I agreed.
Yes, Martha Adams?
I know that you probably want to stay focused on the process because you want to get out of here ASAP, but, but I just wanted to go back to the job description, if we could.
I was going to take us back there. Yes, okay, let's do that.
Just because I know that we can't really do anything until we feel good about that.
Absolutely.
Just looking at the information you provided from the CGCF, I, I, in understanding that we want to get the highest, you know, highly qualified, high quality candidates, I, I think you had some recommendations about possibly changing the title, and I also had, also the reporting. I think we should talk about the reporting, whether that should be directly to the school board, so it's consistent with the charter, which I think makes sense. And then the third thing would still look at the salary. And I guess my question to you with respect to salary is, do you think we'll be able to get the highest quality candidates with the salary range?
I think we probably need to bump it. I don't know how much. I deliberately didn't get information from like LA, New York, Boston, Chicago, because those are vastly different markets in terms of salaries and so forth from us. But even the, the ones that we did select, we, we don't always compare as favorably as we could. Ultimately, I think the HR department's compensation manager would need to weigh in on that. I did not do an actual salary study. There is a lot of data out there from outside agencies as well about salaries, several, you know, eight, like Robert Haff and others that put out scales for chief audit executives and things of that sort. But I don't have a specific recommended salary range. I think we could possibly, you know, ask us to work with HR to come up with an appropriate salary range before it's posted, if we can decide today what the reporting relationship is and what the job title is. I think we're fine with the qualifications and experience and the professional certifications.
Ms. Lindsay, if I can take us back?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Can I take us back to the slide we were on?
Yes.
So the one question?
This one?
Yes, the one question, maybe more than one. The interview questions, we've got down there input from the school board. And I'm not, given the tight timeframe, I'm not sure if you're referring to the board as a whole and being, okay, so, so to be clear, you're looking for input from school board members? And that would be, I'm assuming, you having one-on-one conversations?
We have several ways we could do it. This is, thank you for going to the next one, because this was really spongy.
Right.
I think we could do it where I could do one-on-ones, or we could just send, I know you can't talk to each other, but send the same information to all of you by email and have you respond individually, not collectively, with comments on proposed questions and the, or maybe just designate, you know, some subset of each group to work on this, on this particular task. I don't think we need to have a formal vote, oops, excuse me, a formal vote and approval. I think we can just get feedback and input, because some of the questions are going to be basic.
I don't, I really don't anticipate a problem, but I think we should be prepared that we could have, say, one board member has a question that they really want asked, but nobody else has raised that as a question. Does it automatically become a question that gets asked? Because I, say it's me, because I don't want to single anybody out, and I really feel like this needs to be addressed, and nobody else brought it up, and you guys decide not to bring it up, then I'm over here like feeling like this really important thing has been glossed over. So that's the reason I want to delve a little bit more into, I know what you're saying, that you don't think that the board has to approve it, but I do think it's important that if there's a question that doesn't make it on, that there was an opportunity.
Why don't we develop a draft list of questions and circulate it individually, as I said, so as to not run afoul of sunshine requirements, and get feedback that way? And then find out if there are a question or more that someone just really feels strongly must be in there no matter what, and then get, get a consensus that way, if that's acceptable.
Well, let me ask our general counsel, remembering that lawsuit that the school district lost with violating the sunshine law when the superintendent went to the end. So my thought, in you saying that, except for the fact it could be a sunshine violation, you could send out your initial questions that you all have come up with. You could send that to us, and then if one of us feel like something's missing, we provide it to you, you could send out a revised first.
Right.
And then you would know if everybody is okay with the revised. If not, the revised would come back to the board. Now, to John, have we just tripped the?
No.
Okay.
The process the Chair just described is fine.
Yeah, and that was, that was what we were envisioning, so that we wouldn't run afoul of the sunshine laws. So yes, we'll, we can do that.
Yeah, so the one thing that, obviously, the timeframe would change because we need to adapt back to a regular board meeting or a special board meeting. Again, I highly doubt it happens, but just to have a deeper here. And then on the interviews, I think it would be good for the board probably at this point to make a decision on whether or not we want it to be a representative of the school board, the whole school board, if it's a representative or more than one representative. I'm assuming the board would vote on that subcommittee, if you will. But I'm not suggesting we identify who it is, but are we okay with it being one person that we choose? Or are we okay where we'll decide when it gets to that point, whether it's a person or a subcommittee? Anybody have a follow?
Point of clarification, you're talking about the first round of interviews?
Yes. Yeah, where it says representatives of the school board. So not suggesting that we identify who that is, but that would be, that would have to take place at a board meeting in order for us to identify those individuals. And it might be one person or a group of people. Do we have it scheduled as?
Could we get that determination this evening at your board meeting, if it has to be decided in a formal meeting rather than in a work session? Because scheduling these things and beginning to work on the process would be helped if we could. I, I didn't, I confess, I didn't think that picking a person or persons would require formal voted board action in a regular meeting.
I think if you want to appoint a person here?
Yeah.
I think you could do it here by consensus. I don't think you can afford to do that.
But yeah, but we need to do it in this forum, not outside of a public meeting.
Yes.
Yes, yes. For a second, I thought you said.
No.
I think I can do it.
I didn't hear what?
So if, if the board is ready, we could choose that person. If you all feel like you need a little more time, then we would have to wait, and we need to do it this evening. What?
Let's pick.
Let's pick somebody? Okay.
Not it.
I have a nomination.
I have a nomination, Chair. I bet it's yours. Yes? Don't say you're not willing to. Yes?
I just an external audit pick, so you know, I'm, I'm, my wheels are greased nicely.
Perfect. I'm happy to be the, well, let's do it, let me do it this way also, is there somebody who would like to?
I don't know if there's a subset?
In addition, it's a lot of fun. Vicky?
No.
It will be a different process, Member Salamanca.
It will be, it will be. Interview rather than.
But I do think we need to do it quickly because of that.
Yeah, okay, I've got two no's, I've got a yes, and a for Ron.
You mean like to have her?
No, whether you would also.
Like a, like a second?
Yeah.
Because we need a second, I, I'm.
No, we don't need to. We can just trust, put all of our trust in Member Salamanca.
I think she's got incredible knowledge, but if for some reason you need a second person or?
No, I just want to offer that.
So you can have a backup the way we always have backups.
I don't mind being a backup person.
A backup would be a good idea, because people's, all, you know, people's lives have other things going on, and it might not, there might be a time when we need to get folks together and there's a conflict. So that might be a good idea.
Member Douglas, did you have an interest on?
No, not at all.
All right, you guys.
Martha Adams?
I, I support Member Salamanca and backup as well for Ron.
Okay. Thanks, Ross. All right, that's resolved.
Okay, were you finished, Chair?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, so the superintendent turned her flag up.
I did, thank you. I have a, I take a basic question. So the board has three employees. I'm trying to figure out who the point person is for this. In the past, it hasn't been the person in the position, and I don't think we do that as an organization. So is it going to be a board member? Is it going to be the chief of staff? Are you going to have Linda be the point person that's running the interview process and all of that?
Can she do it?
I'm not saying if she can or she can't, is that typically you don't have the person who's in that position, who's leading, overseeing the interview of the next person coming in.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really want to participate. I don't think it's appropriate to participate in interviews. I'm happy to do sort of the behind-the-scenes logistical stuff, and I would be delighted to get support or, or to have it otherwise handled by someone else, because it's just me. I don't have administrative support in my department.
Yeah, no, I wasn't saying that you didn't participate in the interviews because that may bring value since you know the district. I'm just talking about, like you had, you've had either firm or Bridget when you were with.
looking at, um, our general counsel. I'm just clarifying, that's all, because that hasn't been, it could be a school board member, I mean, I'm just, that hasn't been brought up.
Well, I think it ought to be School Board Services for the Chief of Staff.
Mm-hmm.
Either one of those. I do see, maybe there's confusion here, I, I do see value in having Miss Lindsay be, be part of.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, no, I, I, yeah, that wasn't, yeah, you know, I think, I think she should be more of a part of the interview.
And I doubt that the board cares whether it's the head of School Board Services. Is she not here with that? Um, or?
Bridges right there.
Bridges right there.
No, okay, I'm sorry, I was, I was thinking Rebecca. No, I, I don't know, does anybody have a problem with Bridget handling it? Of course not.
Bridges, like, I don't, I don't know that I, I'm.
I don't know who's next, but.
I believe Member Bird is next.
No, you were. You just put it up, what are you talking about?
We got it.
It was me.
It wasn't.
It wasn't. She just put it up.
Oh, my gosh, relax. She's running her meetings.
That was my fault.
Is that it, Dr. Vasquez?
No, that was my, that was my.
That's good. So, so we will work with Dr. Williams?
Yeah, we'll put together.
And Rob, excellent, excellent. Oh, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Rob and, okay. All right, I believed that Member Bird was next. She's had her sign up for a little bit.
Um, on the, well, first of all, for the title, I, in looking over the, all of our titles, we're basically all chiefs, the senior management, so it seems to me it makes sense to change it to chief internal auditor.
Yes.
So I would be in favor of that. And then as far as the salaries, on this list that you provided, where you have number years experience, is that what they required when they hired them? Or how many, how many years of experience they have, these actual auditors have that are making this money?
No, that is what's on their job posting, so to speak, if they put out their, their chief auditor, what they require as a minimum.
Okay, and these are their ranges for what they advertised?
Yes.
And they were.
Yes, or what's from their version of the salary schedule, if you will. The only one that's different is the Miami Dade and Broward CAEs. Those, those are actual contracted rates, because they're, one just renegotiated his contract, and the other one was just appointed. So that's actual.
Do you happen to know how, about how long they've been with their search?
Oh, in the case of Miami Dade, he, he is a career auditor. He's been with Miami Dade for probably twenty-some-odd years. He was the deputy auditor before he became chief, and I think he worked at Broward before that. The, the Broward auditor had been a specialty auditor many, many years back, and then he left and went to another entity in Broward County, and forgive, I don't remember what it was, but he got more experience there and then came back over as the chief auditor just this past fall.
Okay, so our, our range, obviously, is, is, you know, nowhere near most of these, except for like Clark County, it looks like. But, so yeah, I'm definitely in favor. I don't know if you, where we left it, you said you were going to have, have a check or see what we could do with HR?
I, I have not done a salary study or anything that would be true data on which to base a recommendation, and that's really not my forte. I mean, I can certainly, I, these are, I can tell you what people make, but I think we have a compensation manager in our HR department who's well-versed in this, and if I'm going to be working with Dr. Williams and Mr. Bixler, then we can certainly tap into that resource for some additional support and see what they recommend. But it will be probably, you know, a negotiation type of thing, once a range is established anyway.
Can I just comment on that? So, you know, we did compensation study for cabinet, we also did it for our, our sister principals and our principals, I think John did some principals as well. And so just when we were looking at Miami Dade and Broward, those were excluded because, like, the cost of living and some of the other elements were not comparable to Orange County. And so we looked at Hillsborough, we did look at Charlotte, Duval, some that had more, and, and that we got from a, a firm. So we could go back and look at the ones that were done for, for those two studies.
Okay.
Rob has headed up the one for the assistant principal and the principals, and that, that's what we did for those positions. Okay?
If I may, though, in looking at this position, you're going to find more variation, because, for example, Duval hasn't had a board auditor except since the 2019 School Accountability Act passed, and that, they don't really have a full-blown yet audit function that's up and running. And likewise, Hillsborough has some situations that even though the district is very comparable to Orange, the audit function, I don't think, is, is comparable, and we can talk more about that separately. But, but there are other comparables, and I think that makes sense. I, I would support that, because again, it needs to be done, and it's not my expertise.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now I'm not sure whether Member Salamanca or Member Gallo was next. I confess, I didn't see the moment.
Oh, papers this.
So.
We'll let Maria go first.
Okay.
She's adamant.
I promise I'll be quick, kind of. Okay, so I agree on the title. I think let's at least have the title match the chief audit, whatever one of the.
Chief Internal Auditor is what I heard, so.
Yeah, I love that.
Keep me on this here, okay?
Yeah, I think that's right, so I definitely support that. I think on the salary, it would be great to have some comps that are some combination of comparable districts and standard of living, as well as, especially at the experience will be really important to understand. One of the questions I had for you was, who from senior management do you interact the most with? Because I know in part of the process, there's a pending question on kind of senior management having some visibility into the process. I, I'm just, like, who would be, have a better sense of if someone is a right fit or not, because they're working with them more often than not? Are you talking to?
I don't know that I work with anyone more than anyone else. We, we audit the whole district, I interact with all of the chiefs and with the superintendent and the deputies, as well as directors and senior directors and others. I don't know that there's, you know, we, we audit in facilities, we audit in operations, we audit in fi, I, I don't know that there's.
So you don't have a strong feeling on, and does, does superintendent have a, like, senior management, who you'd want to be representing part of the interview process? I think it's on there, like, getting some of that.
Right, so honestly, I probably would defer to either Maurice or even Roberto, they have the most number of, of audits, they're chiefs, and so Rob, you know, I would, it's in Chief of Staff, but he's going to be involved in this process, but Maurice or Roberto have the most number of, of audits, so I would recommend either one of them.
Yeah, I, I think because.
Are you talking about the interview process? Yeah.
Yeah, so having input in that, so I, knowing how much IT is involved in all this, I would recommend Maurice as the one that has some of the, is part of the process.
So either the COO or the CIO, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, but I would.
Sometimes when you turn away, I, I can't hear.
Maurice, my recommendation was for Maurice.
Oh, it would be Maurice, okay.
Because there is a lot of IT component when it comes to, I don't know.
And he's great in an interview, too. Before he was in his current position, I had him on interview panels for my IT auditor position, and it was very valuable, so that, that would be great. So that's for the, you're talking now about that first round of interviews, correct?
Yeah, can you go back to the process, because I think that was.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Let me do that. Okay, so, I should have numbered these, but you're talking about conduct first interviews and recommend candidates for second interviews. So we haven't decided, so we know it's going to be Member Salamanca with Member Harant as a backup from the school board, and we're going to have the CIO as a management representative participating. And then do we want the audit committee as a body of the whole, or some subset of the audit committee involved?
I didn't, subset, I don't really think.
I think a subset, a subset, yeah.
Because of the problems, you said people's schedules, so if you had a subset, you still have somebody there.
I think so, I think so. What do you think, Madam Audit Committee Chair? Two, three? What, what do you think?
I think probably two is sufficient.
I'm sorry, Member Salamanca, were you finished?
No, so I think that was, the, the last thing I did have was, I, I definitely absolutely want your input into this process as part of the interviews and recommendation of candidates. You know what it takes to do the job, and so on the day-to-day, I think it's, it's really important for you to, like, we definitely want your input and analysis of each of these candidates. So, definitely feel sure.
And then Member Gallo, you had your.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Sorry.
So it, usually when we hire somebody, especially somebody as important as an auditor, do we not have HR? Like, shouldn't we have an HR person that is also on the interview process?
Yeah, they'll run it.
They'll run it.
Oh, you'll run, okay, so HR will be running it, okay. And then, but the interviewers would be Mr. Dragon and then people from the audit committee with Member Salamanca.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that at some point that HR was going to, okay, going to be involved. The other comment that I had, I know that we've got to, like, look at the job description before we can even list it, and I know that we had this conversation when we did our call, but I really would like the reporting of the auditor to go back to the school board. I know that right now our general counsel handles administrative, but our vice chair does all the administrative for the general counsel and for the superintendent, so I don't know why the vice chair can't do that as well versus letting it out, since the auditor is a direct report, or should be a direct report to the board, kind of statute, that is a direct report to the board. I feel like that should come back to the board, and the board should do the approval versus general counsel. I don't think it's going to be a lot more time on the vice chair to click a couple more buttons for the auditor than she already does or is required to do for the general counsel or the superintendent.
Okay, so, so then we would just leave it the way it's described and the way it's practicing, except deleting the reference to the general counsel doing administrative approvals, and that would just, probably just disappear.
Yeah.
From the job description.
We would just mimic.
We don't need to get that granular.
Yeah. We would just mimic what we do for the superintendent and the general counsel. Like, that, to me, makes sense, why are we breaking off a process that's different than how we handle other direct reports to the board?
Okay, and then I saw the Chair Jacobs.
Yeah, I want to make sure that I understand what the expectations are of that administrative function. So let me, let me turn to John for a minute to make sure I'm, I'm clear. I know I sign a ton of things, but because I sign a ton of things doesn't mean that I should be the person that decides that ton of things. And so when things come to the board for the internal audit, I'm not sure if you fully understand what's like happening.
It's just leave, so the administrator's just her leave and her time, that's it, that's what, what?
And travel.
And travel, which is what, as vice chair, I already did, but vice chairs always handle that for the general counsel and the superintendent. I did for two years.
Board members.
No, I did.
Yeah, so, so from my.
Yeah, I'm still approving his stuff.
So, so from my perspective, the only thing I do with Linda is approve her leave, I approve her travel, you know, and I haven't been, obviously, in the position where she's been evaluated before. My understanding is general counsel signs off on the evaluation, but it's.
Well, the evaluation, we need to have a whole separate conversation on.
No, I got that, I'm just saying, my understanding is the general counsel nominally participated in it, and a lot of this, and Linda can tell you, this goes back to when it was originally created, I think the general counsel back at that point was much more active in managing the day-to-day functionality of the audit department than has been in the past few years, obviously. So I think what Linda's talking about, what, what Member Gallo's talking about, more comports with how it's evolved over the years than what it used to be, because I've looked at the job description, too, and a lot of the stuff that's in the job description had me setting, you know, or my position, excuse me, setting, you know, audit priorities, et cetera, et cetera, in a way that this position has not done in many, many years. So I don't have any issue with the very limited administrative stuff going away from my function, because.
So leave, you then are looking at, how much leave do they have and make, honestly, I don't know what.
So the way, so the way, so I'll, I'll.
Computer.
Yeah, so how it works is, you get a, like, the vice chair, when you're the vice chair, you get an email that either says one of two things. It either says you have a work list that needs to be approved, which is any travel expenditures or any leave or vacation. Now, I used to have the P-card, too. Like, I used to have to go into Bank America and approve the P-card, but I believe that Bridget does a P-card now. So all the vice chair is responsible for doing is approving, and it tells you, like, when you go, you see how much time they have, you can't approve it if there's not enough time there. So you're just basically approving travel and approving leave. And I did it for two years for Dr. Vasquez and for Mr. Pomeridian before him, Ms. Inver.
Well, it, again, I've never been the vice chair, I would be the vice chair, but coming into this, my thinking was that if we're going to move it, it would be under School Board Services. And so I was thinking that that would be something that Bridget would handle, because I didn't even know coming into this that the vice chair was handling it.
I think that, so the way that, and this, this was done prior to any of us being on the board, because I don't think there's, yeah, none of us were here. So it was decided to take some of the workload off the chair, that the administrative stuff would fall to the vice chair, and they would approve it. And it, it's been like that since I've been on the board, and so they approve it, and I think that that's appropriate. I don't, and, you know, love me some Bridget, but I think when you're, when you're approving stuff from your people that report to you, I think it's more appropriate that someone on the board approves it versus somebody in the district.
So, and this is Linda's, and please clarify from all, okay? And I don't, I don't have any solution to this, this or all that, but one of the concerns that Linda brought to me a while ago, so we have cabinet, right? And so then each chief then shares with their direct reports what's going on, because she, yes, she's your employee, but she report, but she's also a NOCPS employee. So the functions, like, we did the pilot for remote work, so if there isn't someone, it's not a school board member, that's a, that, that is attached to her, or you could just determine who that's going to be, that would meet with her or him to be able to make sure they are also aware of the things that are going on in the district, especially the things that are coming, like the strategic plan. That wouldn't come just from, so.
Couldn't we, couldn't we put that in the job description? Like, we could put that job description or the job, like, we'll work with cabinet, blah, 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 blah. The, the reporting to the board should be much like John and yours, whereas we approve the administrative stuff, the evaluation comes to the board for the board to look at, have input in, mostly from the, the subcommittee, and, and then we, we approve it. But that, like, the evaluation system should be a function of the board after it goes through the committee. And then anything else that needs to happen in order for the auditor to do their job should really be in the job description per hand, detailing what it, what their, their job is.
Yeah, I'm, I just, I just, so that was a concern, and then I think Bridget started, I don't remember how it was resolved. So just wherever you put it, or however that is determined, I think that's a key aspect, so that they're not in the dark when it comes to things that are happening in the district.
And I, and I don't know that, I don't know. And I, and I don't know that, I don't know if this would be appropriate. So, if it isn't, because this is different, please, my feelings don't get hurt. Because the auditor does work with the school board on so much, there needs to be, like, the audit committee would need that information, like, because their job's not just about doing the audit. It's about how you work well with others, how you interact with OCPS and do those. So, there's got to be a component of that to the evaluation. And so, maybe then Bridget or the superintendent or somebody would, like, take a little piece of the evaluation and hand that over to the audit committee to review and add to their evaluation to give to the board.
Would John have Vasquez as a part of the evaluation?
Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, just to respond to what Dr. Vasquez said, I think that the issue she articulated is more one of communication than anything else. Just to cut to the heart of the matter, what happens is most all of this information is disseminated to cabinet members. And I'm not on cabinet. And so, it, nobody needs to change who reports to whom or change processes dramatically if we can find a way to send communications that are necessary for any top level of management to know about, like the pilot remote work program, like the strategic planning thing, all of that stuff to cabinet plus the auditor. Something like that. Because it's really, truly, truly, not this problem. It's a communication problem. And I think we can find a way to figure that out.
Well, yeah, and we'll actually go through Bridget as a deputy of School Board Services.
Yeah, I agree.
But the Chair has had her thing up for a while, so I'll circle back to her.
You gotta do this. You gotta do this. You gotta go, "Not it. I didn't see that."
Chair Jacobs?
We are going to have to work on empty seating arrangement. Initially, I thought she couldn't sit next to Member Bird. Then I decided it was Salamanca. Now, she can't sit across.
So, really what you're saying is, "Problem's me."
You're the problem, Gallo.
Actually, I'm glad to... Here we go. Actually, I'm really glad you clarified kind of the why behind what you were suggesting. I completely agree. I think the position from that standpoint should operate just the way the other two positions are looking for. So, I'm fully on board with that. And I also think that, I don't know what the thing is with that. It's a teaching thing.
That might be a...
The teachers always go down.
Oh, okay. I was going to say that better not be like sign language you're going to start using with other board members.
Bridget didn't, so...
Okay, so I'm good with that. Bridget's out of the room. We can just have everything else over to her. Yes, Sheila. All right, we resolve that?
I believe, I believe so. So, essentially, we're talking about the reporting relationship being, as it is practiced now, which is the physician reports to the school board through the audit advisory committee. But that includes all oversight, no dotted line side thing for administrative matters. Administrative matters will be handled through this chain of command, maybe with a delegation to the vice chair. But that, we don't need to get that granular in the job description. It's enough to say that it's to the school board.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But that will help us with the org chart as well.
Yes.
Our data volume. Absolutely.
Okay, any, all right. So, we've got a job title. We've got a reporting relationship. And I'm going to recap these at the end of the meeting. We've got a desire to evaluate the salary schedule. But that's got to be, we have data, a need for data before we can resolve that. Circling back to the process, we're fine with the initial screening being myself and HR. I heard that the shortlist would be the audit advisory committee just by itself. I'm not clear, was that also going to be just two members? Or was that going to be the whole committee? I think, I think there'd be value in the, in the whole committee laying eyes on the first round.
Timing, if timing falls within any of our meetings.
Well, we could do this without having a formal meeting, just to select the shortlist, if we're careful about our emails, like our general counsel said, so that we don't violate... If you think we need to have a meeting for an open discussion, then we'll just schedule one, subject to people's availability. So, so the body as a whole for that one. Then, for the interview questions, that'll be staff. But we will circulate the draft questions to all of the board members. And we will take feedback and input and then distill that into the first round of questions and send the entire revised list out to everybody again to reach consensus, possibly through that process twice, possibly, if it's necessary, but hopefully not. Then, the first round of interviews will be conducted by one member of the school board, that person being Member Salamanca with Member Ferrant as her backup if there's a scheduling issue. And two members of the audit advisory committee and the chief information officer. Then, we haven't talked about the second round of interviews yet. If we could direct your attention there, please. Chair Jacobs?
All right, so, that's, you know, that's pretty much one to be focused in all probability. If we put the right people on that task and they recommend it to the board, it's unlikely that the board would go in a different direction. But given how important this position is, I really think that, I really think that should be the whole board. Or at least...
For the final interview?
Well, that's the, see, that's the thing. It is, that is the final interview. We're talking about the second round of interviews. It's making a recommendation to the board. And the board on here is approving the recommendation. So, if the whole board isn't on the second round, then the board is never having an opportunity to interview. And I really don't feel comfortable with this level of position and the board not being able to interview that person.
Or a subset.
A bigger subset.
Or a subset, yeah. Because it is hard to get the calendars on.
Yeah.
So, for both superintendent's position and my position, when it's the last round of interviews, it's everybody on board. So, if you're going to treat the auditor position like my position and the superintendent, you probably should add consistency.
So, you could do a second round of interviews. And with the, with the goal being to narrow that down to three people. And then, that comes to the board. Or a minimum of two people, and that comes to the whole board for an interview and decision. I just, I want whoever we're considering to be in front of the board with an option. Don't, don't come back with one recommendation. So, preferably three, unless we only have three candidates. And I don't know, John, you were about to say something. Okay. That's enough for everybody?
Okay, so, we're talking about the possibility of a second round of interviews. If the pool is very, very small and there's only five people in your first round of interviews, you may not need a second round because that's second. You might be narrowing it down to three and that's coming to the board. So, you know, if you're interviewing 10 or 15 people, we would want that first round to narrow it down.
Well, then, let me ask a point of clarification. If, as you said, we get only five, but if we get only five applicants and clearly there are only three that the audit committee believes are worthy of interviews, do we want to essentially skip the first interview and go straight to school board interviews? Because...
But let me clarify. I want to make sure that the audit committee is interviewing.
Okay, all right.
So, I...
So, they might interview three and pass three forward.
Yeah. But the other alternative is, because there is also a whole lot of value in us hearing the questions that you all have and the answers you get. They're going to be more valuable to us than the questions we ask.
Yes.
So, I really, I really think that the end, where we're wanting to make a decision and we're going to interview potentially three people, I want as many members of the audit committee as are available to be at the table for that interview process. Everybody agree?
Yes.
I mean, it would almost like if, you know, if we just sat in the back of the room and listened to you, I think we'd get more value out of it than if we all get to ask the questions. So, that's my main goal, okay? I think the board should see and hear the candidates. I think preferably, we have an opportunity to ask questions, but we make sure that we schedule it around a time where we, I would say, at least have a majority of the audit advisory members at the table. Everybody okay? I got nods over here.
I just, I have my card. I have some clarification.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Before Teresa said, what she said, I had, I did have concern about our position in terms of the interviewing because I did want the auditing committee to do the initial interviewing. So, I agree with that. But I also know that since they're going to report to us, we do need to have some understanding, or at least be able to see the candidates are here. Will we, we're not going to be asking any questions. Will we, or we'll just be listening in on the questions that'll be asked by the auditing committee?
As I understand it...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, tell me what it is.
As I understand it, I mean, they're a sunshine committee, just like you folks are, sunshine board. So, their meeting to conduct the interviews will be posted and available. We don't typically record all of the audit, the routine audit committee member meetings. But obviously, I think these interviews would need to be recorded. And if we follow normal HR interview protocols, those are all done virtually now anyway, the first round of interviews. I don't know if there would be a difference because of this position or not, but we might have applicants from all over.
Can I, I think there's confusion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Am I not answering the right question?
No, so, what we're talking about here is, before a final decision is made, we are at the table interviewing the whole board. We'll be able to ask whatever questions.
The second, that's what I was trying to find out. At the second round, we will be...
We will be part of the team that's questioning. And we will have the audit advisory committee also asking questions.
Yeah, I just wanted to know that. That's what I needed to...
We'll be able to ask questions as well. If you had a question, you can. If you don't and you just want to be a part, like, you would just be a part of it, but you are, it'd be a chance for us to be able to ask questions if we did.
So, the board's going to have input into questions that go into first round. So, if there's question, like, we talked about that part. You don't have to go to the first round interviews because that'll be a bigger chunk. But the second round interviews, the board will do. So, you will have access to, like, impact the first round of questions and then second round.
The second round, if I have questions, okay.
You can ask more questions.
I just need to be clear on that. Thank you.
Point of clarification, please. Are we envisioning the audit committee doing the first round of interviews and then more or less handing it off to the board for the second round of interviews? Or are we envisioning the audit committee remaining involved in the interview process in the second round? I need clarification.
The latter. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. I was getting so many nods, I thought, okay. So, first round of interviews. If there's, if there's 20 people, that first round of interviews is going to be probably to narrow it down to a smaller pool. So, there could be a second round of interviews that, again, is the audit committee, advisory committee, which is a whole or a portion, you all make that determination, and Member Salamanca, okay? That would be, and then, we would, when you get it down to three, that might be for the third round, that might be for the second round, depending upon the number we start with. When we get down to that final round and there's only three, it would be a meeting of the full board and the audit advisory committee.
Yeah.
Okay, that's...
I like that.
And again, the only question, if you have 20 candidates, they're all eligible, and this group meets with Member Salamanca, and the best that they, they don't feel like they can get it down to three, they may do a second round.
Oh, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
I mean, you may or may not. They may come back and say, you know what? There's really only three candidates worth considering, in which case...
Depending on how many.
Yes, Member Ferrant.
Just a quick clarifying question. Do we feel that it's necessary to have the full audit board with us at that final round of, or would it, could we do, like, represent, like, maybe a representative or a subset? So that it's, because trying to get all of us with all of them might could be a little challenging, plus they already had to do several.
And so, I know this is a little big. My suggestion was, it's open to all of us. At least we need a quorum with regard to the audit advisory committee. It doesn't have to be all of them. But I did, I thought it should be the majority of them, but...
If it's, if it's handled as a school board meeting and not a joint meeting, then we don't have to have a quorum of the audit committee present. We would desire as many as we're able to attend to do so. But as we've said, everybody's calendars are busy and it's difficult even to get, you know, today's meeting scheduled. It took us four months to get this one on the books. So, so we would invite them. But if it's a board meeting to which they're invited, it's not the same. And here I am, I should be looking at our general counsel. But I believe it's not the same as a joint meeting where you need a quorum of both bodies. Is that accurate, John?
That's accurate. As I would envision in a second interview, the audit advisory committee would be more of an advisory role, a technical assistance role there. And as long as you have a quorum of board who's having these interviews, I think you're good to go.
Thank you. Okay. What else? Oh, thank you, Member Salamanca.
My question, I guess, to the group is, or maybe suggestion is that we get a set of recommended questions for that second round from that first group of people. So, there's things that, obviously, given time constraints or for whatever reason, they didn't get to spend time with or hesitations from each candidate, just a bit of that prep work. So that when the board starts interviewing candidates, we also have a starting place of questions that advance the understanding of the candidate, not just kind of start from scratch.
That's great.
And so, that would be my recommendation, is that...
Yeah.
That whether we're taking notes in the first round or like passing on some, on at least the remaining questions of the candidates, so that the board can start from there.
Yeah, we'll have a separate set of questions, not repetitive, except, not repetitive intentionally, as possible. You might ask them again, you know, some main question.
We just, we have a big board with a lot of questions.
Right.
So, I just want to be mindful of candidate's time as well, so...
Exactly, exactly.
Like to scope the questions a little bit for you. We have a lot of questions.
Yes.
That's the whole board, so let's...
So, we'll have a second, we'll develop the second round of question. We'll develop the questions for the second round and circulate those for approval, much as we did the first round. Yes, Dr. Vasquez. Chair, did you have?
Yeah, one, probably too far in the weeds. But I think it would, the meeting, the interviews with the first round will be recorded. I think it would be very helpful if a link were sent out to all the board members so that we have the opportunity...
To listen in.
Especially if we end up with a smaller number of members of the advisory committee that can make it. Those of us, and I think it would be most of us, would want to be able to see and hear the interview process.
Well, we wouldn't proceed with that first round of interviews without at least a quorum of the audit advisory committee.
Yes, I'm saying, at the meeting with us, if we end up...
Oh, yes.
With less participation because of scheduling, at least we would have had the opportunity to see the first round.
Of course, yes.
What do you need from us next?
All right, well, that's what I was just going to double check. We're not going to really get into the timeframe now. other than we'll try to move with deliberate haste, but not, but we've got to work through the process and the schedule. And then, just keeping us honest, going back to our meeting objectives, I think we've talked about the charters. Everything was basically, yes, that's reflecting the way things are operating and the way that people want it to operate. The job description, we've covered, oh, yes, ma'am. What am I missing? Oh, I'm sorry, Stephen. Excuse me.
Forgive me if this was clearly stated, but as a point of clarification, was it decided at what round senior management would be involved in the interview?
It was the first round. And senior management will be the chief information officer. We've decided on the job title and the reporting relationship on the job description with the salary range pending HR input. I guess for point of clarification, if we get a recommendation from the compensation management part of HR and it is, it seems reasonable, are we, do we need to check with you folks on that? Or are we authorized to move forward once they have made a recommendation on a revised salary schedule? I just want to make sure we don't step out of line from what you would like to see.
Salary schedules, once we, HR would come up with a range. If we ultimately change the range, it still has to go through the board to get approval of it. We do board approval for salary schedules. So, yeah, I mean, that can be done at the same time, for example, on a consent agenda when you're getting ready to hire the, hold on, it's a two-step process. On a consent agenda, when you're getting ready to hire the auditor, you can have consent for the salary range and the revised job description. And then you can have on non-consent the actual decision as to who you want to select.
No, no, my problem is she's going to advertise a range. She's going to post a range. I don't want her to post a revenue.
No, you're right.
Yeah, so if we have, you're right. I, the salary schedule usually goes to the board. So I guess it would have to go to the next board meeting because we need time for HR to do their analysis. Okay, so we'll bring that to the January 28th board meeting.
I told you, November 2026.
You're working hard to make it. Is that all right? Do you think, Mr. Bexler, is that...
Yeah, I've already been talking with Teresa. So we'll quickly take what you've provided.
Okay.
And then we'll do some analysis of surrounding districts or other large board districts. And we'll come up with salary range and job description by that board.
And I'd be happy to offer pointers to her about which ones are more comparable or less comparable. Okay, and then, so that'll take care of the last piece of the job description. And then we've got the steps in the process outlined and who's going to do the interviews. And the overall timeline is sort of soft, but we knew that would be the case because of all of these moving parts and people's availability. But at least we have a path forward. So I think we've covered the meeting objectives.
Do we do the job description?
Well, the job description content is just the requirements of the position. You have a red line of it in your packets. The board, excuse me, my apologies. The audit committee went through it this past year twice, making sure it reflected everything it needed to for the new standards. To the extent that there are references throughout it to reporting to the audit committee and the general counsel, we'll be striking all those references to general counsel in light of today's discussion. But otherwise, the core responsibilities are not going to be altered by this discussion because the auditor still has to run the department, still has to conduct, you know what I'm saying? Yeah.
Then we'll take that red line version with the new title and pin it all up for approval of the board meeting 28.
Thank you, Ross. Okay, I think, I think you've brought it home. Is there anything else?
One thing before we adjourn, we have two members of the public that have joined us at this, for this entire meeting. It's a work session, which we are not required to take public input and rarely do. But given the fact that they have sat with us this entire time and have had an opportunity to hear our discussion, if the board doesn't object, I'd like to give each one of that three minutes to provide their thoughts and input in the process. Okay? Okay, he's a member of the press.
Right.
He raised everything he just said.
I was just an interested observer because I was an internal auditor at one point.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to see what you were doing as such because you had contact with your person for several months. I wanted to see this because it was part of what I did as such. So I had some more background and experience. And listening to MPO, sort of an MPO versus a not-for-profit, is a very interesting dynamic as such as to how your selection process works, which you're well aware of.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I would like to thank all of you.
Oh, Patel.
I did have one kind of clarifying question about the interview process. Is it customary for OCPS to be, to have interviews at positions like this in person or usually remotely?
I'll let our chief of staff answer.
A lot of times, it's the will of the committee. And so we would poll the committee to see what they would prefer. We do, there's sometimes it can be face-to-face, but the candidate can't make it.